Good evening and welcome to the Port Clinton City Council Regular Meeting of July 23, 2019. Please stand and join me in repaying the Pledge of Allegiance, the Lord's Prayer, and taking a moment of silence for our military veterans and those who stand there.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor to God, our Lord and our Savior, our God of kings and of nations, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and we give not due justification but deliver us from evil. The Lord is King, the power and the glory of our Lord and our God.
Thank you. The board please call the roll.
Mr. Velo?
Here.
Gilfriedman?
Present.
Beth Gilman?
Present.
Roseanne Pickman?
Present.
Brian Hill?
Here.
Margaret Phillips here. Lisa Sardi?
Present.
Council, you received the April 9, April 23, May 14, May 28, and June 11, 2019 meeting minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes as they are unwritten?
So moved.
Second.
First for Mr. Velo, second for Ms. Phillips. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes stand approved if they are written. The Chair notes that certification has been received regarding compliance with the rules and notification of this meeting. Before we begin our guest presentation this evening, we have Craig Talecki and Jack Jones from Pogomire. I would ask Mayor Snyder if he has something he'd like to say for now.
Just a quick introduction and to tell you how we got to this point in time related to their presentation. About seventeen months ago, when I started tossing around the idea to myself and my family about potentially seeking the seat I'm sitting in now, I met with two groups of people. The first group I met with were the then junior class at Port Clinton High School, just recently graduated, and the second group were about 200 area citizens, Port Clinton residents. And I asked both groups the same question, gave them a piece of paper with thirteen issues facing, generalized issues facing the city of Port Clinton, and asked them to pick five and rate them top to bottom. Got that information back from those two groups, and surprisingly, the top six answers were identical, just in a slightly different order. And the top five, from five to one, attitude of the citizens, job creation, downtown revitalization, city finances, and roads and infrastructure. Well, tonight, after 191 years and 25 days of being in existence, the folks from, beginning the city of Port Clinton being in existence, the folks from Pogomire Design Group are going to be presenting the first ever, to my knowledge, comprehensive infrastructure program for the city of Port Clinton. As we look back at what's recently happened within the city of Port Clinton, we can point to the downtown revitalization and the energy that that's brought to the downtown area and the attitude the citizens have towards the beautiful downtown, what the lighthouse has done, that development of that area, and the energy that that has brought to our community. Of course, Trulay Stadium, although funded primarily through private contributions, what that has done for that neighborhood, for the attitude of the community towards Redskins football, and of course, the attitude of the kids now that they have a state-of-the-art facility that is much better than our arch rivals in El Carver, the Redskins. Of course, the new schools have, the award-winning schools have brought a change in attitude towards the school district, towards our community, to outsiders, and it's my hope that with the work that's taking place on the wetlands that Mr. Martin will talk to a little bit about, that will again continue this positive trend that's been going on for the past couple of years, building on this infrastructure program. The core of this project didn't just happen overnight. The information that Pogomire Design Group utilized came from reports that were generated from previous administrations, previous councils. I can remember voting on sewer studies and water studies and road studies over the past couple of years. I had the opportunity to hear about this in very early stages of my term in this seat. Mr. Martin and I met with the folks from Pogomire Design Group, and my heart was racing from almost the first word about what they were proposing for our community. We then met with city supervisors and gave them the concepts and ideas. We met with individual council members, gave them the concepts and ideas, met with other elected officials, met with the members of the Main Street and Chamber of Commerce, gave them the concepts in here, and today, we're here to announce this program to the community as a whole. Following this, we'll have a series of public meetings where folks can give their input, discuss their thoughts on this plan. This whole time this has been happening, from the moment I first heard of it to today, the folks from Pogomire have been meeting with Eric and Dave, the water distribution supervisor, and it's not sewer distribution, it's sewer collection supervisor, to tweak and modify, if council, from the time you saw it to today, some things have been tweaked more on the microscopic level than what was personally put out there. The final plan, after public comment and so forth, hopefully will be to council by mid to late fall, with the intention of putting this initiative on the ballot in the March primary of next year. Now, what I want to make really clear as well is council has the opportunity to take action on this proposal, but they have chosen to give this to the people, to make their decision of whether or not they'd like the city of Port Clinton to move forward with this infrastructure plan. So why do we need a comprehensive infrastructure plan? Well, frankly, if you have to ask that question, we're not living in the same town, and I can't debate you at this point because it's well overdue. It'll address the decades, if not century-old, issues that are facing the city with roads, water lines, sewer lines. More recently, the health of Lake Erie has become a prominent factor. This will help address some of the issues related to algae blooms and CSO overflows. It improves the capacity of our wastewater treatment facility, separating storm and sanitary sewers will open up a tremendous amount of volume for additional expansion of our services to our neighbors and any incoming industry that might be looking at Port Clinton. It's a plan with an action that opens up the door to potential additional grants and public dollars. I didn't realize, and I'll be very honest with you, I didn't realize every meeting we have had with, you name the alphabet organization, dealing with infrastructure, they ask, "What is your five-year plan? What is your 10-year plan?" Without that, we're just spinning our wheels. We don't have the opportunity to open up those doors, to draw down some desperately needed dollars. And it shows the world that PC is willing to invest in itself to move forward. I know it's a sore subject, but a lot of the debates over the past 15 years with regards to development, no matter which side you fell on in that debate, it always seemed to come back to a conversation regarded to, are the citizens of Port Clinton willing to invest in themselves before anyone else will come in and invest in the city of Port Clinton? Now, I want to emphasize, and I'll say this a couple of times, and there's going to be participation, what you're going to hear tonight is not the final plan. What you're going to hear tonight is not the final plan. What you're going to hear tonight is not the final plan. Could everyone repeat that with me? One, two, three. What you're going to hear tonight is not the final plan. Let's try that one more time, just so I understand. One, two, three. What you hear tonight is not the final plan. But again, it lays the groundwork to move things forward in the city of Port Clinton for a ballot initiative in March of 2020. With that, I'd like to turn it over to the gentleman from Pogomire Design Group to share with the world. Thank you very much. And it's Mike.
Again, I'm Greg, select from the Pogomire Design Group. I'm going to be with Jack Jones. What you're going to hear tonight is not the final plan.
Wait, what? It's not?
We're happy to be here, members of council, members of administration. We have had the opportunity to work with the community off and on for a number of years, and have been involved in a number of projects that we're very proud of. And so to be here tonight to talk to you about, you know, three things, which is probably the biggest, most significant project that the city, at least in our involvement with the city, that you all will be looking at. I wanted to just comment on two things, and then I'll turn these over to Jack. First, as the mayor indicated, we did, I think there are some members on council that are still here, that are still members of council, that a few years ago authorized us to do some water distribution analysis, and authorized us to do some review of their sanitary sewer. And so we've taken that information and combined it, and I'll put it into a comprehensive outlook, which we're going to review with you tonight publicly here. But one of the things, I give Mr. Martin credit when he was retained by the city, is one of the things is he recognized that there's never really been this kind of comprehensive, let's really take a bite out of this thing instead of just these small baby steps. And I think that was one of the things that Owen kind of charged us with initially, is what's the long-term fix here? And regardless of, you know, views from the past or whatever, he said, "What's the long-term fix? What's the right thing? What's the right way to approach this?" So we spent a good six, eight months kind of talking through this, we talked through a whole bunch of different scenarios. And then when Mayor Snyder took office, I think when we met him for the first time, we probably weren't more than 10 minutes into the conversation of just, hello, how are you? And bang, you know, we talked about things like, you know, he's on board. It's like, you know, this is very important. So in terms of the leadership at the administrative level, they've recognized this very much, and you can obviously see by their discussion and the way they portray this, they certainly recognize this as a very critical issue to the community. So what we're going to do, I'm going to play the most important role, because I'm going to click the PowerPoint, and Jack is going to somehow take us through this. But as I said, we want to kind of give, kind of keep our comments to, keep the presentation for about 15 minutes, give you a general overview, and I guess if we can answer questions, if Madam President, if you want us to do that, if you take questions, however you'd like us to proceed.
Most likely, we'll be back to talk about this not being the final plan. The reason it's not a final plan is because it truly is a concept plan. It's a project concept that works, that has some logic associated with it. By no means does it address all the problems in the city. The various reports that Greg alluded to and have been completed by the city probably add up to somewhere in the neighborhood of 60 to 70, maybe 80 million dollars of the potential improvements. He fixed all the sanitary, all the water, all the storm, and all the road projects, right? So it's significant, and by itself, well beyond comprehension. So what we did was, we tried to take a concept and develop it that we thought addressed some critical elements of all those issues, and put them into one project that makes sense to the public, to vote on an issue, again, being something that there's support about, the community, entire community is supported about. So what they were going to share that with you tonight, first of all, so we started out with a project that might be, it was addressing three or four streets, it was 5 to 7 million dollars. We said, well, how are we going to come up with our share of that? And they said, well, the right way to do that is to do something more comprehensively in a funding scenario. So we'll talk about the project concept tonight. The next phase is the funding concept, and there are a multitude of funding options that we're exploring, including some grant and loan funding through the U.S. Department of Agriculture, which is referred to as USDA. They have some grant money, and you're eligible for some of that. They have some loan money, which you also be eligible for. In fact, they only give you grant money to take some of their loan money, but the water and sewer portion of this project are eligible under that program. So that's a portion of the funding. Then there's some 0% money and things through the EPA, and then there's some just general money we're going to have to finance through our own improvements, our own local funds, and the methodology that we choose. So we're not there yet, but we're trying to develop something that, again, goes to the voters in early next year. So it's a, we're going to refine this project, we're going to refine it with the staff some more, we're going to refine it based on roads and some of their more detail on the roads, 85% of the roads technically should be rebuilt, which is impossible, it's very costly to do. So we have aging infrastructure, which we've alluded to, it's 191 years.
191 years.
So, and some of it might be that old. You have wooden water lines in this community, one of the very few committees in the state that I'm aware of. We've encountered wooden water lines in different committees, but you actually still have one in working order, if I understood it correctly. So very unusual. You have lines that are plugged up, that were started out as eight-inch lines on a water line, and then today, their function is about two or three-inch diameter because of the buildup of the chemicals that occur throughout the years and different kinds of water treatment that you've adopted. So there's a lot of different things to address. You have a very complex system. So you have combined sewers, which are storm and sanitary. So they function to take the sanitary waste to the wastewater plant during the dry weather periods, and function to take the sanitary and the storm to the wastewater plant during the wet weather periods. And then you have separated sewers that are only sanitary, that go to the plant if we can get them there, and they're only storm, they're just dealing with strictly storms. You have a variety of elements, which is not unusual, but maybe to the extent you have them, I would say is somewhat unusual. So when we look at the entire community benefit, you know, we talk about 31 miles of pavement within the community, some of that pavement, I said 85% of it technically should be rebuilt in some way, shape, or form, but that's not feasible. So what we tried to do was develop and say, look, how much of this could be improved by resurfacing, and are going to be improved by virtue of the infrastructure improvements we're going to try to incorporate in this project? So when we build a water line or a sanitary sewer, a storm sewer, we're going to fix the road as part of that project, and that's going to be eligible under that grant funding scenario I talked about previously. Where we don't do any water, sanitary, or storm, we think we should still do some improvement to the roads to try to improve the residential streets so everybody gets some form of a benefit. So to do that, we looked at three inches, two and a half inches, and two inches of resurfaced material, along with some milling that would take place or cleaning of a street. So we're cutting some of it off, then putting it back down to get a good surface, and then we have to do utility adjustments and manholes and water valves and things like that, they're all associated with that. So we've taken a good, hard look at it, it's okay now. So some of the roads are new, some of the roads are improved, some of the roads are in decent shape, but for the most part, we're going to try to address a majority of the residential streets within the community. So what we did was, we developed different concepts for the worst-case scenario, if you will, and the kind of the best-case scenario. So we looked at storm sewers, and you can see we're in from 1.1 to 1.4, that's certainly not addressing all the storm sewers that have needs for it. They're trying to do some critical improvements to try to bypass some of your combined sewers and to try to take that storm water and redirect it to the lake. Now, I'll be first, almost to admit, the lake issues we've had this year cannot be addressed. It can't be addressed by this project or any project. We can't, we have to lower the lake levels to solve your problem when the lake, the water comes over the existing walls that we built and the infrastructure we had. So if it keeps flooding, we were circulating, so we went from, you know, treating 2 to 3 million gallons a day at the wastewater treatment plant to 7 to 20 million gallons a day during this recent period we've encountered. It's happened all along the lake, you're not unusual, you've been there, there's a lot of different people. We have some unique issues to try to deal with in the community, but, so we're not, we're not really addressing those per se, because those are unique and will go away when the lake level drops back down as it's currently doing. But it is important to note that we can't solve all those problems. The water lines, anywhere from 1 man to 3.2 man, okay, so what we're trying to do is take some of those lines I talked about that are three-inch diameter, we want to improve fire flows, we want to solve the problem, but we're fixing most of the repairs, we want to oversize some lines to get some better development and flow through the community. We're blessed with having a pretty significant, let's say, outer loop within the community to get water where we need it, but we still got to get water internal to the community, and a lot of those lines are in bad condition. So if we can afford it, we think 3.2 man would be the least recommended solution to try to address that in a significant way. The same with the sanitary sewers. So the downtown area and much of the central part of the city is combined sewers. Most of the outer part of the city that's been developed in the last 20, 30 years is separated sewers. The problem we have is, the only way for the separated sewers to get to the wastewater plant is to flow through the combined sewers. So we're separating the sewers, and then during the storm event, we're putting that separated waste back into the combined sewers to get to the treatment plant, so we're adding to the pollution to the stream. So what we want to do as part of this project is to truly bypass all the separated sanitary sewers, give them directly to the wastewater plant even during a storm event. That's the primary emphasis that you'll hear us talk about today. The milling, where we talked about, the utility adjustments of the pavement, you can see from 4.5 to 5.8 million dollars, again, on two inches or two and a half inches of resurfacing. And then 25% of the cost is 10% contingencies, AD costs, solid testing costs, all the things that associate with the project and the general theme, use roughly 25% at this stage of primary estimates. So we'll get that project. So then the question becomes, how do we fund a 19-million-dollar project? So if we got no other grant money, and we have specifically stayed away from talking about how much grant money we could get, because we won't know that until we actually meet with a specific project, well detailed out, to meet with the funding agency. But what we do know is, we can get money in the 3% to 4% range all day long today, up to 30 years, actually up to 40 years, if we wanted to go that long. And we can get some 0% money, we can get some grant money. So we think the 1.5% is a very achievable number to get to. So that's $800,000 a year, 802, as you see there, for 30 years if we get nothing else. If we did it for 20 years, it jumps to about 1.121 million, significant in itself. And so it's a challenge to figure out how to get a funding mechanism put together that makes sense that we can, again, take to the public, that they will consider as reasonable to generate those kind of dollars. Now, one of the things, this is the smaller project, it's the same concept, you see it dropped to about 540 and 755, so about 400,000, let's see differential, 300,000, 400,000. And so it is significant by itself that we're looking at some pretty major numbers here. Now, one thing we have that is, I'm not sure exactly how it's going to be handled yet, but the water treatment plant that you built in 1999 is being paid off in 2019. So that's $136,000 a year. So if we could apply that to the project, it reduces all those numbers I just reviewed with you, and that's all this sheet is showing, is that you could reduce the amount that you need to generate by applying that back into the funding scenario, and then again, combining with some grants and other things. Let me point out one thing, so by doing this project, the money you spent annually as a city to take care of resurfacing and road improvements and things essentially would be saved for a five- to seven-year period. We shouldn't need to spend much money on roads, because we're getting resurfaced roads and improved roads and some improved infrastructure. So there's a net savings of something out of the general fund. They could put it into a reserve fund, and then could be used to go for more grants every year, like the Ohio Public Works Program. So we have an Ohio Public Works Program, we've had it for 25 some years now, where we can apply for a road improvement, or water, sanitary, storm, any combination of those, and up to maybe get up to a quarter million dollars in funding, and then match it with another, maybe quarter million to be competitive. So that, the roads that need more attention that we can do as part of this project could be singled out and gone after on an annual basis over that period of time, or the money can put in reserve account and go after a little bigger project if you want to, but I would encourage you to probably continue to apply annually for that money and sell those projects. So a road that really doesn't have a great base underneath that we know is not going to last very long, but we, again, want to improve it today, but we can't spend a million dollars on that road, we want to spend 200,000 on that road, we could target that for one of those other future improvements. So this is the sanitary sewer. This is difficult to see probably, but this is the amount of sanitary sewer. Now, I have a slide later on that'll show you exactly what that means, but what those yellow lines are doing is redirecting that sanitary flow to bypass the storm, the combined sewers that are currently in the major part of the downtown area. It's important, again, to try to cut down the pollution, to try to leave some of the flow at the wastewater treatment plant, and to solve that problem, because EPA wants us to solve that problem, they want to minimize the amount of pollution. So those are the targeted sanitary sewers, and each of those would, of course, have a road improvement associated with it, and may or may not have stormwater. Storm sewers, this is the targeted storm sewers we're taking into account. So we're trying to, again, bypass the combined sewers, get it to existing storm sewers we have in the community that are good, that are new, that are functional, and trying to get that storm water to the extent we can, redirect it, and make sure that we're making a significant improvement within the community. So this relieves the sanitary sewers from the storm, or the combined sewers from the storm water perspective, the sanitary relieves it from the sanitary perspective. So the water system has got a lot, a variety of different lines, and again, I want to point out, and I couldn't be more specific about this. So what we did was take early inventory reports and things that have been done by the community dating back 20, 30 years, some of them, and water improvements and road improvements and things, and tried to make sense out of what we could do with these projects. So today, Eric and Dave and Tracy may disagree with some of these concepts and want to tweak them a little bit. We met with them, and we said, look, we get it, right? So areas you think that really need attention or are going to be really problematic for you, you do a lot of repairs that weren't really addressed in a previous study. So the project will change, it will be tweaked, it will be a modification of all these, but it gives you some idea how much water line work we're planning on doing as part of this project for 3 million dollars. And the last issue is, so we know we have to, we can get funding to repair the roads, where we do these infrastructure improvements through water and sewer improvement money, some storm improvement money we can get funding for. So then the rest of the streets, we said, look, why don't we try to provide a benefit? If we're going to have some comprehensive, universal funding mechanism here that applies to most everybody in the city, why don't we try to give everybody in the city some benefit? And so the idea was to take into account, again, some of those will be a little bit more structured redevelopment, most will be resurfacing, because that's how we can build a project, and then buy some time. So what will happen is, you know, the whole community will be beautified at one point, at one together, right? So instead of waiting for doing a road and waiting 10 years for your road to come up and then, you're trying to improve the whole community so it looks like a nice community, you drive down every road, it's a nice road, there's no potholes, things like that. The idea is to create a new image for the community that also buys some time on putting some money aside, like I said, that you don't have to spend every year, and then when the funding mechanism comes up, everybody will see some benefit, some, hopefully, desire to improve the entire community. So that's the concept. Now, in going back to the sanitary, I just want to point out, so you can see, all those red numbers on there are combined sewers. So you can see a good portion of the community is combined. We built a few new sanitary sewers through that downtown area we're tying into, we're to the Hayes Avenue Pump Station, the Jefferson Avenue Pump Station, we're going to give them to bypass the combined sewers and go directly to the plant, because now we can do that by extending the line down Jefferson, down Third Street. So this is a major good impact to the community from pollution. So if you have a basement flooding, I'm not going to promise you'll never have another basement flooding, because when you have a 100-year storm, 500-year storm, significant storm events, or multiple significant storm events, or the river or lake continue to go up, there are things that we can't control. When we design these improvements, we design them for basically anywhere from like two to 10-year design life, meaning a two to 10-year design storm would be accommodated by this system. If it's a 25-year storm, it's going to start to build up in the system, maybe way on top of the catch basin till it goes away. It's a 50-year, 100-year storm, it's going to potentially at least create some issues within some houses where you have problems already. You know, what it won't have is much pollution in the basic backups. You'll have storm water and sanitary water, that's the goal, is to try to minimize that wherever it occurs. We're going to solve some of those, we're going to really truly solve some. So you're not, some people that have an issue today won't have an issue, but not everybody can we fix with this type of improvement. But, so we tried to make sense out of it, the storm sewer, this is basically the same thing. We can't fund the 60, 70, 80 million dollar projects, so we tried to focus on something we thought could be funded, and could make sense, it could make sense for the funding agencies. So, you know, if you did a lot of little projects to try to accomplish the same thing, you'd be tearing up the town for the next 20 years, you know, and no matter when you're doing it, like the construction around the state of Ohio today, no matter where you go, which direction you go, something's tore up. They're doing them all, you know, for whatever reason, it seems like everything is under construction. But you'll have it all done, you'll put up with it for a year or so, 18 months, a year, and then you'll have kind of a nice relief period where things will be better, no potholes, hopefully, beautify the community a little bit, addresses some of the infrastructure improvements that we're trying to deal with, and does the most comprehensive thing we can do with the limited amount of funds that we still, it's even though it's expensive project, it's still a relatively limited amount of dollars when you consider the overall dollars that have been addressed by the community at this point. So that's the concept. Again, not firm, definitely going to be a changing concept as we move along, refining the costs, refining- along, refining the costs, we're fine, but I think the costs are reasonable. What we try to do is get a reasonable number of the numbers, so we may tweak the project, but we shouldn't have to tweak the infrastructure number much, or do a little more work over here and a little less work on somewhere else as we move this project along. So it is a, you know, I feel very comfortable with the project itself. We've met with USDA three to five years ago, when we developed the infrastructure plan, the water and sewer that we did, water lines and sanitary sewer. And they claimed that you were eligible for funding. We met with them, again, in the last three months and said, look, we want to revisit this, are you still make sure that Port Clinton is an eligible entity? And the answer was yes, you're definitely eligible. That's based on income, the size of the community, the water and sewer rates, everything else in the community go into that determination if you're really eligible now. You're only eligible for the true water and sanitary and the related improvements along with those, that's the only cost relative, but that's significant of the 19 million, it's probably, let's say maybe half of it, is what could be eligible for 30 to 40% potential funding, so significant, and 3 to 4 million dollars. Then we have other programs we can go after as well. So we're in the process of continuing to tweak that. Mayor, hopefully, I didn't do too much over time on it.
Jack, maybe I'd just like to, maybe just add one more.
Now we're going to go over.
I tried to shut him off.
I guess, and I'm going back to the more of the private conversations we've had, the question is, why now? Why now? And the answer is, is very simple, is because that infrastructure in the ground continues to get older and older and older, and the cost to replace it over time continues to go up and up and up. So if it's not now, all you're doing is just, you know, if it's five years from now, it's just that much worse, that much more expensive. And so as I said, I think it goes back to the basic point of, again, that we talked a little about, was putting a solution out to the community. And again, there's, as we talked about, there's no quick cheap fix here, but to be honest with the citizens and put this issue out there to them, and then hopefully they will agree with the plan and they will have the funds to go forward.
Two more follow-ups to that they made me think of. One is, construction costs really are fairly reasonable today, believe it or not. They've definitely gone up in the last two or three years. We had a 10-year period where they didn't go up at all, they were almost dead flat. So we're working off a reprieve, if you will, during the recession of a seven to 10-year period where costs were very stable, and interest rates for public financing are extremely low. So I won't tell you how old they are or anything, but in my not working lifetime, the average is 7% for funding a public infrastructure improvement interest rate. So up till the last seven to 10 years, 7% is what we did. Today, we look at 3 and 4% and think, man, you know, when it goes up a half, we're all whacked, right? I mean, people were paying 9% to 10% on house loans not that long ago. So we are enjoying a very, very good rate. On top of that, we've had a lot of programs that have tried to subsidize that rate, that lowers that down. So when you think about one and a half percent money, or 2% money for 30 years, it is dirt cheap compared to what we've spent most years to build these kind of improvements. That's good, and the construction dollars have remained relatively reasonable, I would say, for, and this is a big enough project, you're going to get a lot of people interested in it, because they can come here with their crews, instead of coming here and doing a $200,000 project, and when they hit a snag, they got to move their crews and all their equipment off-site to go somewhere else to work, they're going to move to another street and work, right? It's going to be very efficient for them if they had any kind of snag or underground things unexpected, they'll be able to work their people around and move just around town to keep the projects moving, and that's very efficient for a contractor to do it. And it gets big quantities, it gets quantity discount if you get some big quantities we're dealing with.
Jack, what do we estimate, like three years to install?
No, 18 months to 24 months for this size of project. So, and again, depends how, I mean, we will put that, we will make that a mandatory, by the way. So the contractor has to bring enough crews to do that, it's not going to be a small contractor, it's going to be a decent sized contract.
Mayor, back to you, or maybe Madam President?
Question? Council, do you have any questions? Alex, Mr. President?
I have one question. I know when we talked, when I was first brought into this part, there were a couple of roads that I had questions with that were state roads that we discussed, I'd still like to see those removed out of the project.
Right, so again, we're going to, we're going to take, we're, the state, we're not going to improve any state roads with your money, right? So, and we can apply for state programs to improve state roads, right, which is what has been done in some of the downtown roads that you've done. So again, we're, to refine your question, I think you had some good questions back then about, you know, things that we want to reconsider. We want to sit down with your team of people, your staff, and make sure the administration is agreeing with the project as it's developed. It, you know, there's no magic to it, right? We can take a street off, we can add a street back in, what we don't want to do is just spend money where somebody else is going to spend money, which is generally the state.
Right. That was my comment on Perry Street.
Yeah, I know, I know you talked about that then. So, and I don't know the answer to that at this point.
Keeping in mind that this was not the plan, seriously? I'm so disappointed. Does any, do any other council members have any questions or comments at this time? Mr. Volker?
No, at this time.
Mr. Martin?
No, I do not, thank you.
Does anyone have any questions, comments? Gentlemen?
Food for thought, we'll be happy to come back. Thank you so much for your time.
And again, we will be scheduling some public discussions as we move forward here.
Very good.
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you.
Last time I entered, there was candy. Thank you again. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right. We'll now move to public comment. Hill Helly 317 West Good Street.
Mr. Mayor, Madam President, and members of council, it's been great to be retired from this business for several months now. I support DORA, I think that that's a great thing for the city. Being as somebody who's sat in the same position as you, Mr. Mayor, I do have concern about emergency measures, and the ability, or the taking away of the ability of the residents and citizenry to petition referendum. The legislation itself, Section 12 states that this is in the best interest of public safety and health, and I'm not sure how walking around downtown with a drink in your hand meets that, meets that public test. Again, I fully support the DORA, I do not support arbitrarily using emergency measures to pass legislation and remove the rights of the people. I spoke with Councilwoman Gilman, she's been, she's a saint when it comes to public comment and public outreach through social media, and I expressed my concern to her. Not meeting a timeline for the end, or for some part of the tourist season, if that is the purpose of the emergency measure, does not meet that, that test that the state has set forth for emergency measures. The people should have a say whether or not they come in here to express their satisfaction or dissatisfaction with legislation. That's why we have petition referendum in this state. It allows people another check and balance on our government, and by removing that right from the people, takes away arbitrarily the right of that petition. I would ask council to reconsider Section 12 of the legislation. First, it's poorly written, it has nothing to do with public safety and health, I mean, I can't, I would welcome comment to that very, that very sentence, because I have to question what walking downtown with a beer from business to business has to do with public health and safety. Secondly, again, I support perhaps a reduction in government control and certain things, and I think this takes away from the people. I think taking away the petition referendum through an emergency measure takes away the very right that people have. I won't beat the dead horse, you all know how I feel, I'd ask you to consider Section 12 and perhaps waive passage of that, just pass the legislation straightforward. I think it will instill public trust in the process even more, and I'll put my foot in my mouth if you guys do that, because I think that it really shows good, strong government. When I was a mayor, this is a great crowd, we never had that when I was mayor, and that was one of the biggest reasons, is because people don't get involved until they know what's already happened. So I would implore all of you to please consider that with passage this evening. And then one other thing, real quick, Mr. Martin? We have some gravel in my alley. When the gas company came in and put the new concrete ramp in, there's like a four-inch drop.
And they're finished with their project.
They're going to come through with gravel?
Yep.
Okay. Again, council, Madam President, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your time, and I implore you to reconsider that emergency. Thank you.
Larry Holman, 418 West Sixth Street.
Thank you. Recently, Congress Ohio has passed House Bill 226, and this is directed to the administration and the Law, Rules and Ordinance Committee. What this does, it opens up the door for fireworks to be exploded over 1.3 grams in the state of Ohio. In the past, it's legal to buy fireworks, but you had to sign a waiver that you exported it within 48 hours. In the past, to blow a fireworks 1.3 grams or higher, you had to have a slip from the state fireworks. Now this opens the door for anybody to blow them off over 1.3 grams. What I'm concerned about is the safety of the citizens of Portland, and if there's a way we can ordain on ordinance to supersede the state ruling if it is passed by Senate. Are you with me here? Any questions?
Hi, do you have a question? Yes?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Holman, thank you very much. And one of the reasons I've worn the hat of Fourth of July Chairman for the past 12, 13 years, is because I share that same concern of the health and safety. I'd rather have, you know, when a community doesn't have a community Fourth of July celebration, you see an uptick in personal injuries. Question, where this law was created?
Excuse me, I'd like to see the administration as far as laws, rules, to follow this, and if we have to adopt something. So we're, I don't have a bottle rocket goes through my bedroom window to a clock in the morning. And if it goes through Senate, it opens the door to anybody doing a fireworks display without a license from the state of Ohio. Thank you.
Thank you. Hold on, Madam President?
Thank you very much. Council, I would just like to let you know that earlier today, Hogan Taylor took over a position, accepted a position, started the position of zoning inspector for the city of Portland. He'll be working Tuesdays and Thursdays. He's going to be working closely with the former zoning inspector, Ken Johnson, who I want to thank for his time, energy and effort in our community for that endeavor. Hogan brings a great deal of construction experience and background, he's a resident of Bay Township. I was pretty impressed this morning when he came in and the questions he was asking, had read the material that we presented to him, he's very excited and ready to start today, but please be mindful that there's going to be a huge learning curve going from what he has been doing to this position, so be kind. I did have the opportunity to attend a ribbon cutting at a new little library by the playground at Lakeview Park. Want to thank the friends of the parks as well as the Idrop Library, it's a small little library that's dedicated just to children right by the playground, and it has the same look and feel as the lighthouse that's in the middle of that playground. This Thursday is the Art Walk for the Greater Portland Area Arts Council, if you haven't had an opportunity to attend one of those, it's neat, they're just downright neat. The talent of the art community in Portland is, continues to amaze you. Rock the Light, the music festival taking place the weekend after Labor Day, those tickets are still on sale at the Chamber Main Street office, make sure you get those. The local discount expires?
August 1st.
August 1st? Good timing there. This evening, council, you have in front of you the legislation for DORA as revised, I'll give a little more about that from Mr. Velo as the time comes. I would encourage you to adopt that this evening so we can move forward with what's required at the state level with liquor control. I would like to thank the DORA committee for their almost now two years of dedicated work for this, Mike Zipfell, Mike Roder, Nikki Adams and Nicole Koken Sparker. I'd like to also thank the Main Street Board of Directors for their wisdom and insight a little more than two years ago, when they brought this to the committee to get organized and move forward. Just a reminder, again, back to the Greater Portland Area Arts Council, there is a photo contest currently underway, I have that information, it's also available at the front desk here at City Hall. The deadline for that photo contest is April 5th. Anyone is welcome to submit up to 15 photos, but the pictures have to be of something within the city of Portland. Those will be judged at a certain time, and then the intent is to use as many photos as possible as decorations in the mayor's office, and if allowed, hallways and this chamber as well. And then finally, August 11th, Sunday, August 11th, from 11:00 to 2:00, the Portland Firefighters Association is having their annual chicken barbecue at the station, $10 per ticket. I'll be standing at the door as everyone leaves tonight to collect their money and hand you tickets. Thank you very much.
The Audit Nurse Report.
How can you do that, Madam President?
Thank you. Truck Service Report.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The bed taxes, as you can imagine, have improved a bit. Tonight, the total is $53,768.47.
Thank you. The Law Director's Report.
This time, that was.
Thank you. Safety Service Director's Report.
Thank you, Madam President. Several things, first, I want to start just an announcement regarding the senior picnic will be at Lakeview Park on August 2nd, 11:00 AM. Probably the two biggest questions that are out there, obviously, everybody wants to know what the big amounts of dirt are on Perry Street, so the wetlands update. The project that's been ongoing since Mayor Tester's administration has started back there, has finally begun last month, I know over the last month or so, folks saw the cuts and things that were made on the Frag Mighty that cleared out the view. The city has an important part in this project with the U.S. Corps of Engineers, and we have a significant in-kind contribution, or it could have been money, but in this case it will be in-kind, and we're doing a lot of the work. Part of the work that was required was the, some excavation on the east end towards the Oak Street Pump Station, which is where you see all the dirt, that dirt is hopefully going to be, the rest of it should be moved by tomorrow or the end of the week, it will be out of there. We had to put a temporary road in, originally we were going to use the upper road, the idea was we would put a road in parallel to Perry Street, Washington Street parking area, where they would load out, because what's going to happen is they will completely excavate the existing wetlands, and then they will bring in fresh dirt that's clean and not having invasive species, and they will like this to rebuild the habitat and the environment for the habitat. So we had to put a road on the east side as well. That, those materials will then be removed, and it will be part of, that whole spot between where you see the wetlands on the east side and the actual dig that has occurred to three feet, two to two and a half to three feet, that will all be wetlands, part of the wetlands. It's just shy of 1.48%, it was added as part of the project many years back. That road will be going on the east side, and then the road to the west of the wetlands area will also go, we'll regrade that, that will become grass just like it was before. Fairly certain that, based on what we've been able to do thus far, even preparing the site, that the issues that exist with the newly created pond area, because of some of the landscape that took place is going to disappear as well, we're very happy about that. Some of the materials that we've, that we have, we'll be able to use, the ones and twos that are made of the road, we'll actually use to create and protect the southern edge of the Derby Pond. If you look at the Derby Pond, if you've been out there, you can see that the north side was, it's always had one of the tubes of gravel, the south side never did. We've not experienced nor'easters like this, where we've actually had whitecaps on the Derby Pond, and we've had erosion issues on that south side, so we'll be able to use some of those materials. That's what's happening at the wetlands. As far as the high water issues that we've had, as I briefed the last council meeting, we are continuing to look at the issues and working with, actually, the Pogomeyer folks and others. We've met with the Ohio EPA, we've met with DNR Coastal Management Office, we've met with the U.S. Corps with the U.S. Corps of Engineers Planning and Operations, we've met with their emergency operations folks, most recently is last Wednesday, the Nature Conservancy, and others, to try and have everyone have input to this and help them understand the problems that we have. We had public meetings two weeks ago with the Ohio EMA, it's a hazard mitigation grant program, and we are currently looking at specifically in the downtown area, between the bridge, if you will, and Jefferson Street pier, how do we, how to try and mitigate the flooding that we see on Jefferson and Madison, and the flooding that we've seen at Perry and Monroe, that's all part of that. Notice that Perry and Monroe seems to have dried out just because we took some action at the end of last week, and that was line, that line that takes the storm water out to the lake, that was all lake water coming in, that's now blocked. We've created a temporary pump station so that when it rains, we can still pump the water out, but we won't have standing water every time the wind even remotely blows south. That will allow us, hopefully, next week, you'll see some construction at Perry and Monroe because if you look there, you'll see the roads collapsed a good 18 to 24 inches. We will be repairing that catch base and addressing that. In addition, probably in the next week or so, you will see there will be some temporary construction on Perry Street near the Knights of Columbus for a lateral, sewer lateral that needs to be addressed there, and then you will see shortly after that, North Madison, some work from the alley between the popcorn shop and the fish house, catch base, and we're going to redirect the catch base, and that brings a lot of that lake level water to the pump that was not part of the original project when North Madison was done, and that pump was there, and we'll be getting back here soon. With regard to the high water, we're still addressing, as I said, I met with the EMA or Emergency Management folks from the Corps last week, really looking at short-term fixes and very long-term fixes. None of these programs that exist out there currently, the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, would require us to basically ride the storm out until we were to get fully approved with a plan, and that could be as much as 18 to 24 months before we would see any funding to address those things. We are looking at with the Corps of Engineers, and we'll be discussing tomorrow with the group, how to address the terrible erosion and scouring that we've seen in the aggregate and the armor stuff along West Lake Shore Drive. We've also been talking about specifically about Perry Street erosion and the City Beach area. We have some price estimates on what it's going to cost to fix that, and we're trying to come up with some alternatives on how to make that happen and protect the infrastructure. Very happy to report that what we did in the meantime with the barriers a week ago or two weeks ago Sunday, had those barriers not been there, I'm confident that we would have seen water at City Beach and Perry Street. The wave action was tremendous, and we gained a lot of sand back. If you walk the beach and just look down the side, you can see the amount of sand that we gained by that. So we are working towards it. I know Jack mentioned that we can't fix all of it. We talked about the high water, and we can't, we're not going to fix all of it because Mother Nature has a big piece of this. Although we can look at the levels that we have, the estimates on the length of the water and the damage to the current infrastructure, and how to try and mitigate further damage, and that's what we're working on pretty much daily, and hour by hour as the winds chill, but we're trying to make it happen. The last thing I'd like to mention, Madam President, is that I was approached by group, by two individuals who asked about what was happening with the wetlands, and that led to conversation about how the erosion that did take place at City Beach has dropped a great amount of sand west of there and west of the Oak Street station, or pump station in that schoolway, and you'll see that we have, we've tried to clean and work on as much of the beach as we can, to the point that you will see in front of the lighthouse and to the west of it, that we will also try and gain back. We're going to grab as much of that beach and start grooming that. This conversation with those two individuals led us to, they've offered to step up and help organize a group that would be specific to, similar to our Friends of the Park and our volunteers that are doing the flowers and things, but they have an interest specifically just in the beach and doing some work with our city crews on the beach. So we, on August 6th, at 6:00 p.m., we'll have an organizational meeting for folks who have an interest in being involved with that, kind of Friends of the Beach group that will help kind of keep that, keep the areas groomed and continue as we address how are we going to fix the issues on the beach. And that is all I have.
Thank you. Please Chief's Report.
It will be here, I'm sorry.
Nothing to know, Madam President.
Thank you. And I achieve the attending training. So we'll move to correspondence. Counsel, we did receive from the Ohio Division of Liquor Control, a transfer from Bell Mel Inc., doing business as Bell Mel Tavern, to Bell Mel Tavern Acquisition Company LLC, doing business at Bell Mel Tavern, first floor in patio at 307 Oak Street, Portland, Ohio. 43452.
Madam President? Move to waive counsel's right to object.
Motion to waive. A second for Mr. Freeman. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Eve Velo?
Yes.
Mayor Snyder?
Thank you very much, Madam President. Just, nothing related to that, but I just would like to thank Jimmy Russell and his family. He's all I've ever known at Bell Mel's. From a little kid going there after my dad's softball games to most recently having some pizzas with friends. Jimmy has been a staple in our community. Anytime I've approached him for a civic organization, he's more than willing to help out. I'm glad to see it here that he's still going to be part of that, that operation, just not making pizzas on a daily basis. So if you, if you see Jimmy, thank you for being part of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. The third to make the control. We also received a letter from the Catawba Island Township. Dear Portland City Council members, on behalf of the trustees of Catawba Island Township, I would like to express our interest in a proposal for the city of Portland for EMS service. We understand to provide EMS services for other townships in the area, and we are looking at alternative options available for providing EMS services to the residents of Catawba Island Township. Thank you in advance for your consideration. Sincerely, Catawba Island Township trustees, signed William Rockcar, Chairman. I have a motion to approve the first amendment stated. First from Ms. Sardi, second from Ms. Phillips, all those of data.
Aye.
I will ask and place this with the Emergency Services Committee for review and follow up with Mr. Martin, ordinance directing. We'll now move to the reading of ordinances and resolutions. This evening for the third reading is ordinance 20-19. Will the clerk please read by title and summary only? Ordinance 20-19.
Ordinance 20-19, ordinance creating a designated outdoor resuscitation area for the city of Portland, enacting regulations and decrepit emergency.
Does council wish to take any action on ordinance 20-19?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
Move to amend ordinance 20-19, Section 7, by striking from the third and fourth line that identifies the name of the establishment that is serving the beverage. Thank you.
Motion to amend, striking, amend ordinance, or excuse me, amend Section 7 of ordinance 20-19, by striking that identifying the name of the establishment that is serving the beverage. Second from Ms. Hickman. Further discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Eve Velo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Does council wish to take any, or excuse me, ordinance 20-19 has been amended? Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 20-19 as amended?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
Move to retain the emergency clause of ordinance 20-19.
Motion to retain the emergency clause of 20-19 as amended. Second for Mr. Friedman. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
I would just note that Section 12 was drafted by the council by the city's legal council, and I accept that as passing muster. Additionally, there was an emergency measure attached to the Portland Lighthouse Conservancy land lease. There's no reason to not afford Portland Main Street, that same section, I guess, in the ordinance pertaining to that program that we did for the Portland Lighthouse Conservancy.
And Mr. Helly, there was more in that section than that first part you read. It's a little bit longer than that. I know you've seen the ordinance, so it's more than just that little section. Make sure you've read that. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
No.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Eve Velo?
Yes.
Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 20-19 as amended?
Madam President?
Oh, excuse me. To retain the emergency clause, insert. Thank you, Mr. Velo.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Velo. Does council wish to take any further action on ordinance 20-19?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
Move to adopt ordinance 20-19.
Motion to adopt ordinance 20-19 as amended, second for Ms. Hickman. Further discussion?
Madam President?
Mr. Velo?
The Planning and Development Committee has had this topic. Now, wardens, discuss this earlier today. Approve 3-0 to recommend the council approve this.
Thank you. Further discussion? Seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Eve Velo?
Yes.
Joel Friedman?
Yes.
Beth Gilman?
Yes.
Roseanne Hickman?
Yes.
Brian Hill?
No.
Margaret Phillips?
Yes.
Lisa Sardi?
Yes.
Ordinance 20-19 as amended has been adopted. We have no second readings this evening. We have no first readings. We'll move to business from the floor. Tonight, I start with Ms. Sardi.
Thank you, Madam President. The next infrastructure meeting will be August 6th at 6:30, and the next progress will be August 13th, 6:30, and then August 13th.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sardi. Mr. Friedman? Ms. Hickman?
Nothing, Madam President, I'm very happy.
Thank you. Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Madam President. I think we've done something this evening which we would have done for quite a while. If it doesn't work out, we move it. The DORA. I don't expect anybody to, I think there are enough people into us to do this, and I'm really happy to see that. So much going on. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Phillips. Mrs. Gilman?
Nothing, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Hill?
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, I want to congratulate our EMS team. Mr. Martin and Chief Johnson had a great vision, and seeing it come to pass is pretty nice to see. Congratulations on that. Yeah, as you know, I mean, I didn't support the DORA tonight. I did hear a lot of opposition, made some suggestions that would possibly satisfy both parties, just like reducing the hours to a later time where schools or churches or post offices or stores wouldn't conflict with that, or reducing the size at least just to start. And that's fine, at least, you know, I voiced it, and it is what it is. But I did want to thank the mayor and the Main Street for all that you guys do, even though I didn't see eye to eye on this one. I know you guys do a lot of stuff in the city here, and I really appreciate it, and so I just did one of this to be a reflection of how I feel about the work you guys do. So, thank you, that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Velo?
Thank you, Madam President. The next Planning and Development Committee meeting is scheduled for August 6th, but I wanted to see with my committee colleagues on August 5th, if you're available early enough to manage Ms. Adams' group to talk about the special improvement that's due from the Chamber of Commerce. Six o'clock?
Six o'clock.
August 5th. The Planning and Development Committee will next meet Monday, August 5th, at 6:00 here at Portland City Hall instead of the regular scheduled time, August 6th. On the DORA, I look forward to seeing it benefit the city. And this is an instance, for I'm proud that Portland is ahead of Sandusky in the area. Some of my colleagues might get upset when I constantly compare our progress to that of Sandusky, I'm impressed with what Sandusky's done. I think this is one thing we're doing that so far they haven't done. Hopefully that works to our benefit, and that's all I have tonight. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Velo. Seeing no further business?
Madam President, I move this office by adjournment. I will say.
Ms. Sardi, I will adjourn.
Aye.